Notice of a regular meeting of the City of Friendswood Planning and Zoning Commission to be held Thursday, May 28, 2020, beginning at 7:00 PM in the Council Chambers at City Hall located at 910 South Friendswood Drive, Friendswood, Texas. The Planning and Zoning Commission Regular Meeting is called to order. We do have Commissioner Eric Gunther attending remotely by computer. We will now receive any communication from the public or committee liaisons to the commission to comply with provisions of the Open Meetings Act. The commission may not deliberate on subjects discussed under this agenda item. However, the commission may direct such subjects to be placed on a later regular commission agenda for discussion and/or possible action. Please note that public comments will be limited to a maximum of five minutes per person, and the commission's vice chair, Mr. Richard Sassen, will be the timekeeper. Seeing no one from the public at this meeting.
Is this when Trish would normally talk?
No. We wait to the very end. Yeah, but good point. We'll call you out at the very end. Okay, again, seeing no one from the public here, we'll move to the next item. Next is action items. According to the Planning and Zoning Rules of Procedure R 2019-15, all action of the commission shall be made by an affirmative vote of four or more members of the commission present at such commission meetings. Our first action item is consideration and possible action regarding the preliminary plat, First Baptist Church Number Two, a subdivision of 9.49 acres of land situated in the S. McKissick survey, abstract number 151, being a replat of all of Lot One in Block One and all of Lot One in Block Two of the final plat of First Baptist Church of Friendswood, and being portions of the residue of Lot One and Lot Two in Block Two of Friendswood subdivision, including an unrecorded portion of East Heritage Drive as recorded in Volume 254, Page 37 of the Galveston County deed records, and transferred to plat record seven, Page 20 of the Galveston County map records, and Lot One of the Harper subdivision, an unrecorded subdivision, all in Friendswood, Galveston, Texas. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Aubrey, is there a staff summary for this?
So this was the preliminary plat that was on our last agenda. We approved it with conditions, and the applicant has met all the conditions, and everything's been met.
Okay. Brett, any questions?
No comments.
Rich?
Yeah, can you just remind me of what the conditions were that they had to comply with? Sorry to sneak that one up on you.
That's all right. Let's see.
And I should have looked that up myself. I apologize.
It's okay. I think I just have, I need to go back to the last agenda because we didn't put them in this one. Okay.
That was just a typo. Okay.
Yeah, adding a representative's name for the owner, correcting the vicinity map scale, adding the regulation matrices for all the zoning districts, and the sidewalk easements, and to remove the signature blocks.
Yeah, it was the sidewalk easement that I remembered being the only substantive thing, and that's all cleared up, so we're good. Okay, thank you. Sorry to sneak that in on you. Should have warned you in advance.
That's all right.
Anything else?
No.
Eric, anything from you?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mark?
No, sir.
And Dick? I have nothing as well. We have a motion to approve in a second. All in favor? Shows to be unanimous. Our next action item is consideration and possible action regarding proposed amendments to Appendix C, zoning ordinance, Section 7.1, Downtown District, general purpose and description to add a reference to Section 20 definitions, Section 7.2.3, area and height exceptions, to amend the height exceptions and Section 20 definition height to remove a duplicate requirement. Is there a motion?
A motion to discuss.
Okay. Is there a second?
A second.
Aubrey or Becky, is there a, any staff, just asking if there's any information. Oh? Say that again?
You want to vote on the motion?
Oh, do we have to vote, we have to vote on the motion to discuss? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of a motion to discuss?
Hey Joe, can I ask you a question first?
Oh, yes, please.
Why are we doing a motion to discuss?
I'll let the movement.
Because we don't really have a proposal as such yet. We're trying to formulate the consistent view of the Planning and Zoning Commission on this issue.
Okay, thank you.
My bad, you probably don't have to vote on the discussion, just on the action.
Oh, okay.
I thought it was interesting that we were discussing the motion to discuss and whether we can vote on it or not, so.
I'm thoroughly confused now, but. So we have a motion to discuss and a second, and so I'll start. Aubrey, is there, or Becky, is there anything to add of information on this before we start our discussion?
Uh, no.
I just thought I would ask. Mr. Sassen?
Yeah, I think this is going to be a discussion involving Aubrey and Becky and various members of the subcommittee, and so I think it's going to be a very, hopefully informal discussion of the pros and cons of the height restriction associated with where we are. Before we get on topic, just one thing. In my old agenda, we had a consent agenda that came first, but now I see it's moved. Is it, are we okay on that, or?
We just moved it for tonight because the First Baptist Church, the preliminary plat we just approved, the final plat is on the consent agenda, and so we needed it after. And there's also no minutes on the agenda tonight. It'll be, we'll have two sets on the next agenda.
So there is no consent agenda?
Yes, there is.
Yes, it's after this item.
We needed to.
We'll do the, and it's not for the minutes, but for the Baptist Church.
Final plat, yes.
Procedurely, we're approving the preliminary plat.
Yeah, and it would be awkward to approve it before we, yeah, okay, I'm with you. Thank you. Okay, so with regard to the downtown district overall height ordinance, most of the members, maybe everyone has seen the, hopefully has seen the city council meeting where they discussed this at length about constructing a church over at 111 East Heritage that would be 72 foot eight inches tall with a church, a cross on top that would extend the height to 90 foot 10 inches. And currently, the current downtown district ordinance allows buildings to no more than 70 foot overall height. The city council approved their application with the stipulation the overall height must comply with the Friendswood Sydney ordinances, and at the same time, they asked us, the P&amp;Z Commission, to review the current height ordinance to see if it is still appropriate in light of the request and what should we be doing for the best interest of the city. The ordinance subcommittee consisting of three members, Marcus, myself, and Dick, we met on May 21 along with Becky to discuss this. We unanimously agreed that the current ordinance was adequate, and overall height limitation in the downtown district of 70 foot was appropriate, and the subcommittee looked at various aspects of this issue to arrive at this conclusion. When we looked at the history of this, and Becky did some good research on this, we found out that the original downtown district height limit of 70 was chosen by the Main Street Committee in the 2005-2008 era, when the downtown district code was created. And then, at that time, the Friendswood building height limit was 35 feet, and since been raised to 40. The downtown district was intending to allow four-story buildings that would require a building height of approximately 55 feet, and extension was added up to 70 feet to allow required or ornamental extensions above the base building height. And so, that's kind of what the thinking was to get to the 70 feet. We couldn't find anything that was associated with the fire limitation things that were discussed in the city council meeting. That didn't seem to be a driver, at least that we could find. Subcommittee based their recommendation on a couple of different items. We were concerned that relaxing the requirement would necessarily allow others to follow this lead with other religious or secular ornaments above the skyline. These future constructions may not appeal to the aesthetic community expectations. They are difficult to legislate, and there's a lot of unintended consequences that could result from this. We may not object to this one, but there might be something coming down the road, and we might say that really does not fit in with where we want Friendswood to go. And it's, like I said, it's trying to legislate aesthetics. Secondly, the existing tree line in Friendswood is about 60 feet, the tallest tree in Friendswood. Turns out to be 71 feet on two or three spreading oaks, as estimated by Friendswood Fire and Tree Service, Justin Estipinal. An extension of 30 feet above the tree line is expected to dramatically change the look of Friendswood and detract from the desired small-town atmosphere. The impact on neighbors' rights must be considered if we were to change this ordinance. A 90-foot height would affect the backyard view from nearby residences and property owners. Although many may be agreeable to this applicant's proposed view, there are many that likely would consider this to adversely affect their property value. Other extra-tall structures that may follow will present views that differ and might also bring consequences that we don't anticipate or don't see in today's application. And then, when we were discussing this, we believed that the current tallest church in Friendswood was De Mary Queen Church with a central steeple height of 57 feet. So this would allow this church, this applicant, to go up to 13 feet higher than what we have now in, without an ordinance change. We didn't really understand the need for the ordinance change. The applicant at the city council meeting brought up that it would not be obtrusive because it was off of 518, but then they said they needed it so that you could see it from off of 518. So we didn't really understand the drive. It seemed to go kind of both ways. And so, we, this is the kind of conclusion the three of us came up with and wanted to present it to the rest of the group to see their view and to see how everybody feels on this issue. Before I open it up to everybody, I wanted to ask Dick and Marcus if they wanted to add anything to what I just kind of said.
I think that's a fair summary, Richard. I believe the determining factor for me in voting or agreeing with the consensus at that committee meeting was that I didn't see the one tower at 90 feet, what is it, 10 inches, 8 inches, almost 91 feet. I saw 10 towers. You know, that's, in my mind's eye, you know, the future shows me 10 towers up and down 518. And so, based on the aesthetics of that and what I wanted for the City of Friendswood led me to say that the more restrictive 70 feet is appropriate.
I just wanted to point out that it was a healthy debate. We spent quite a while in the quorum, I guess you can't call it a quorum, in the subcommittee, right, discussing this. And I should point out that I typically get frustrated with how slow government moves with things like this, but in this case, it allowed me to reflect a bit and change my position. At first, I didn't have an issue with the 90-foot because I was so focused on another aspect on the reason I didn't support the motion that was before us a couple of weeks ago. So I'm grateful for that. Because we don't have a chance to talk about these types of things before we get to the meeting, you know, because of the rules that we follow, I'm grateful for that. I went in with an assumption, I had done some research ahead of this, some of the backup material that staff had given us going into the meeting benchmarked us against other cities that we looked at when we could find clean ordinance, and it's a mixed bag. But I was pretty pleased with the discussion. We really wanted to do the right thing here, and it, at the end is when we realized we were all in consensus. It was not a foregone conclusion going into it, so I appreciate the discussion and the help from the city on the background data we asked to collect, so. Thanks.
Joe, normally, we talk to the city council, and then we give staff a chance at the beginning, but I didn't give Becky a chance in the beginning. We have some photographs that kind of heightened, kind of enlightened us a little bit in terms of what this might look like, and Becky did some good research on adjacent cities. I don't know if you want to talk about that, Becky, now, or is that?
Yeah, sure. We benchmarked a couple other cities. I started with the surrounding cities, Pearland, Lake City, Missouri City, and then I went to the Texas Downtown Association and started pulling towns from there because that seems to be the, you know, the general consensus is we want this downtown and we want the certain feel, so went to the downtown page. Not everybody has zoning districts called the same thing, so we've got a couple of them, but the average height of other downtowns are anywhere from 35 to 45 feet. So our 70 feet is already a little higher than what is normally seen in downtowns. Granted, other downtowns have, you know, the central hubs where the buildings are going to be much smaller. We have a more linear downtown, so I guess it is a little different feel. But there is a spreadsheet that was provided, like Marcus said, it's kind of a mixed bag. They're all over the place as far as what their districts are called and what their heights are, but it gives you a little bit of an idea where we stand.
But is it safe to say that it's, they're all, at least that you found, similar cities that are below 70 feet?
Lake City is different.
Ah.
So Lake City, I had a hard time finding what they're, what they call their old town. I had a difficult time finding what their actual height was. And then, depending on the city, a lot of them either, they don't have maximums on their heights, or if you want to increase your height, then you also have to decrease your footprint. Here, because our downtown district has zero-foot setbacks, you're already gaining quite a bit of, you know, there's more to work with, so that's not going to help us decrease buildings.
Are you saying like building height was dictated by the size of the building base kind of thing?
Yeah, basically, if you have a 10-foot setback and you want to go up 10 extra feet over the maximum height, then you have to increase your setback by 10 more feet. So, yeah, if you want to go up, then you got to make your building come in.
Further away.
That seemed to be kind of a thing.
And I'll add that that was the thing that I found in my research, that most of these height considerations were mitigated in large part by setbacks. So I was coming in assuming that maybe we would try to articulate in our ordinance some type of setback thing, but we already had that in there, the 45, 45-degree.
For some other districts, we do have considerations for, you can increase the height if you, you know, increase your setbacks as well. That's not applicable to the downtown district.
This is zero setbacks.
On the front, yeah.
Yeah, so, and that's, and the reason I bring that up is just to let you know that we were really trying to look across the board here.
Yeah, so we did, we did get an image of the front of Friends Church where the, they actually have two towers. On one side, they have a tower with like a little, like a cupola on top, and then I couldn't get to it because of the trees in the photo. This is the one on, closest to the cemetery side when you're driving down the road. This is the old, original sanctuary, but, and these numbers are not exact, this is eyeballing it off Google Street View, but it shows you where the top of the building is, and then where the top of the steeple, and then the little lightning rod on top of the steeple. So figure 60-ish feet is probably what we're looking at. And then it shows you where 70 feet would be, which is our current max height, and then where 90 would be.
Okay, that's interesting.
So this is a picture that Becky did to try to improve. This is how I'd work it at my job as well. I do a really crummy job on something, then give it to the staff, and then they make it really good. This was in that case. If you, can you pull up the picture I sent, that your, markup of your picture? They'll show how childish it is, but what it does show is the picture itself was a very good picture showing the skyline of the tree line, which you don't get from the Google Earth picture. And so, it's a picture of the same thing that Aubrey took from the top of the Tanos Building, and it shows kind of the sky view of Friendswood and gives a different perspective. And so, you can see how crummy I was at marking where 91 feet is, but it does show that, right now, if, when you get to the top of the Tanos Building, which people will be going to at times and seeing what Friendswood looks like, this is what you see now, and this is what a 91-foot would look like based on that.
This is the third or fourth floor of Tanos looking out? Okay.
Yeah. So anyway, it's the same building, just a different perspective, and like you say, you're above the tree line here, so you can kind of see that the tree line all backs out about 60, 65 feet, and this would project quite a bit above that.
Okay. Brett, any questions?
Some questions. So the 70-foot limit's downtown, and there's no setbacks for that, which that's good. Is that 70-foot limit for, a building can be 70 feet high, or is the building limit set at like 55 plus another so many feet for ornamental stuff? So anything can be up to 70 feet?
Yeah, 70 feet is the maximum building height.
No matter what, whether it's building or ornamental.
But it's also a maximum of four stories.
Right.
So you can't do, I mean, I think you could do a five or six-story building with 70 feet building height, but our max is four stories.
Right, so you could do a four-story building with your, each floor had a plate line of 15 feet for each floor. That would, so.
That was kind of the thinking. I probably wasn't as clear when I described that, but the thinking was, you get a building that's 55 feet, but give them some room to put something on top, and so another 10 or 15 feet, and 70 was a nice round number. But you could build a building right to 70 feet, which is what Tanos kind of did.
Right.
They went to 65 feet, I think.
He's, 60 feet, 65 feet is the parapet wall.
Okay.
But I want to follow up on your question. I want to make sure I understood the answer, because it talks about structure height and height of buildings, so it's the structure and anything ornamental attached to the structure. Is that right, the 70-foot cap? That's how you would view that? Okay, I'm just making sure, could you ask that? I want to make sure I understood that.
Right, that's, I want to make sure I was clear on that, too.
That would have been the interpretation before we redlined, right?
Yes.
Be clear about what you're asking, though. Old or new? The redline version or the?
Actually, I'm asking for both, to be honest, because when I read some of the markups, I wasn't, it wasn't clear in my mind. It was, they called it, you know, building height. I wanted to make sure I understood that the height definition included not just structures and gables, that it included things attached to those.
Yeah.
So we did, in the redline, we kind of, we clarified a couple of items, so in the districts that are not the downtown, you can have a maximum building height of 40, and then an overall structure height of 50. So top of the building, 40, and then you've got 10 extra feet for any kind of, you know, cooling towers, antennas, whatever you want to put up there. The downtown part is worded, so the total combined maximum height allowed for structures within the downtown district is 70 feet. So that's going to be your building plus anything you want to put on top of it.
Attached to it, okay. No, thank you, that was a good question.
Clear on that now, okay.
Sorry I jumped in.
No, you're good. I was kind of like Marcus, I was, the last time we met on this, the tall structures didn't bother me, being in downtown, because that's, downtowns are supposed to have tall structures. That kind of demarcates that you're in downtown when you have big buildings. But after I slept on it and started thinking what Rich said, we got to be careful we're setting precedents here, and 90 feet is probably too high, and so I think setting feet is a good compromise, so I think I'm okay sticking at 70 feet. That's a lot, that's pretty high up there.
Okay. Anything else?
No.
Dick, anything? Eric, anything on this topic?
I support 70 feet.
Can you move your microphone?
Could you say that again for us? Sorry.
Yeah, I support keeping it to 70 feet. I think you guys put a lot of thought into it, and I agree.
Okay, well, let me kind of just had a couple of questions and just thought, trying to think this through, this topic, because again, there were exceptions for towers, communication towers, in the, in I guess previous and now, but they're still capped. Now, we clarified exactly where they're capped. I mean, I think it was a little uncertain earlier, and there was some discontinuity in some of the definitions, but I think you've cleaned that up now, or proposing to clean that up. But again, this is not, I mean, what the church is trying to do is, there's a spear, an unoccupied structure, and then a cross on top of that. So we're not talking about, you know, a parapet, we're not talking about a building height. We're really talking about just a fairly thin cross. I mean, I don't know what the dimensions of it would be, whether it's four inches or six inches in diameter or something, but again, it's not very, I mean, when we start looking at pictures like this, you know, if it's a half mile away from the Tanos Building, you probably can't even see it. But again, I don't, they have never proposed exactly what the structure is going to look like, their cross structure that sticks up to 90 feet. But assuming it's something reasonable, it's going to be hard to see. It's not going to be imposing, I don't believe. I'm just trying to make sure we've thought this thing through, because you're spending a lot of time talking about structures and towers and those sort of things. I want to make sure that we ground back that what they're really asking for is their structure, their structure, their towers at 72 feet and something right, slightly over, but then the only thing that goes above to 90 is a cross.
Which we did discuss, the issue with that is we can't make an exception for crosses, because do you see where that?
Oh, absolutely. So somebody else could, as my example has been, the Tanos folks could put a big T, metal T on top of their building as an identifier for their building that goes up to 90 feet. Is that, that's kind of what you're saying?
Yes, we were.
As an example.
Of course, a T would be like a cross, but yes.
Yeah, because the, obviously, the thinner structure is not going to be as obtrusive as a, as a tower, I guess is what you're getting at, but weren't quite sure how, how you narrow it down to that thin structure, because other than a cross, you don't normally see anything else.
Lightning rods and things like that, but they're usually very short.
What was important to me was, in the original thinking, it wasn't that, hey, we're going to have buildings of 70 feet, oh, we forgot to put something on top. I think the intent was to make buildings of 50, 55 feet and leave an allowance of room for putting something on top. So there's already an allowance in the 70-foot for these kind of extensions. And so, I'm big on understanding why people set what they did so that we can be smarter than them and say, okay, they missed it, we should do something different. But here, I think their thinking was actually pretty good. I kind of support it, and I would not want to overrule the people 15 years ago who thought through this pretty well. So, so the idea wasn't, you know, 70-foot building, oh, we forgot to put something on top. The idea was, yeah, 50-foot building, and if you want to put something on top, you could actually go up to 70 feet.
Okay. And there are some exceptions and things that are actually higher in Friendswood. We have communication towers that are somewhere near 125 feet, if I remember, remember that correctly, in Friendswood, and some lower, one at 80-something feet over at Whataburger. But, you know, I guess, I guess I'm trying to understand the distinction between those kind of towers and what the church is asking for. In my mind, I keep coming back to, well, some of those communication towers have to be, there's a technical reason they have to be that height. In anything in your discussions, is there any issues or anything that we've rewritten that would limit those kind of required heights? Water towers need to be higher, things that have technical reasons to be higher? Is there anything in what you've done or proposed to do in the rewrite that would limit those unintentionally?
It shouldn't. Telecommunication towers are, they're done differently, but yes, they serve, if it serves a physical, you know, a physical purpose, then that's, it's different.
Okay, it's not as, you don't view it so much as a building structure.
Right.
Becky did a good job of cleaning up the ordinance to say 50 feet outside of downtown district and 70 feet in downtown district. And so, these other towers have always been handled by an, on an exception basis, and they're really not part of the discussion.
Well, speaking of that, then, I know in some of the ordinance, sections of the ordinance, P&amp;Z has the right to allow structures to go a little bit higher in the 50-foot limits outside of downtown. I think the P&amp;Z approval is required to go higher than 50 feet. Is there anything in the downtown that you guys are thinking that P&amp;Z can approve anything higher, or is 70 a hard cap? I'm just asking the question.
As I understood it, 70 is the hard.
70 would be the cap. Planned unit development allows the commission to approve alternate heights, but a specific use permit is a, it's an overlay. It has an underlying zoning district, and it would, it complies with those regulations. So an SUP- zoning district, and it would, it complies with those regulations, so, an SUP in the downtown, which is what the Church is doing, is a, it's still gonna be restricted to the seventy feet.
Okay. I like your line of questioning, though, and, and we, we've followed that rabbit trail a bit, too. Uh, the, the other objective here was to come out with a clean ordinance that whoever follows us in these seats, or at city council, you don't get into the debate and have to rewrite an ordinance five or ten years down the road, because there's wiggle room and gray area in there. Um, it's, it's really hard to define what's ornate, what's habitable, what's there for architectural purposes or otherwise, uh, so, for me, I just wanted it simple, let's just, let's just cut as much gray out as possible, to make it easier on the people who sit here after us.
That, no, I think, I think that's, that's a great idea. So, you mentioned, and I think it's my last question, I, I think it might be, is, is, you mentioned the fire, cause I've, I am one of the people that actually heard that as well, years, I mean, for years, that, that the limit on the four-story building was a, a, a fire issue, or firefighting issue. Um, and you're saying in your research, the, the height limit of seventy had nothing to do with, with, with fires, or habitat, it just had to do with a fifty-five foot limit?
It was a, and, I'm paraphrasing, Becky, but it was, you know, what do we wanna have in downtown? Four-story buildings, how tall are four-story buildings? Eh, fifty-five feet? And so, you know, let's give some room for a, a top, I, I think that's the extent of our knowledge on it, and so it's not a lot of detail, but, um, but the, the fire issue wasn't something that we found, it, not that we, they didn't, there may have been some discussion, and we couldn't find anything on it, uh, but, uh, we didn't find anything on, on, on that issue.
It was an optics of, what is, what do we want Friendswood to look like?
What is it downtown supposed to look like?
Yeah, downtown.
Right.
That was part of it, it was not so much what downtown looked like, it was mainly that four-foot height limit, it was a, an economic reason, uh, the, the land was getting so expensive, so you had to allow developers to go up vertical, without reducing their footprint, they have enough rentable square footage, so that was the main driver of the, of the four-foot, uh, four-story building, is, is economic reasons. Uh, and yes, they, they're good in downtown, too, but it was, uh, economic reasons behind that.
No, this is interesting, and thank y'all for going, spending so much time and effort going through all these different options of this.
And the, I don't know if it was clear, the seventy feet came from doubling the existing, uh, the thirty-five foot maximum height that was allowed at that time, it, they just doubled it to get to seventy.
Got it. And you said the max, the highest tree in Friendswood's sixty-three feet, huh?
Seventy-one.
Oh, seventy-one, sorry.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, yeah, one tree is seventy-one, but the average trees are sixty-
Like, based on the picture, looking at the picture that you have up there, yeah, it's-
The sk, the skyline is, yeah, in the sixty-five foot, there is one that sticks up seventy-one feet.
Yeah, that's interesting.
Yeah, I know, I thought so, too.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. Any other, any other questions or comments on this?
Discussion.
In this, part of this discussion? So we have a, we had a motion to discuss, uh, it was on the agenda as an action item and possible consideration and action.
I, I, I don't know, I probably need some guidance here.
A motion to approve.
There, there are two things, really, that we're talking about, one is to do the specific changes to the ordinance, and, and submit that to city council, that, that is before us. And then the other might be a position paper to city council on our view on the seventy-foot versus ninety-one-foot, uh, ordinance change.
But it's embedded, it's embedded in there, cause as it's written, it does-
By its absence, it is.
Well, by defining that seventy-foot is the max, you, you've, you've built in your position of the subcommittee.
Well, that's fair, yeah.
Is that right? So, so the question, fair, the question is, do we try to see if there's enough interest in approving that this evening, or do we, do we let this percolate?
So, if-
Is there any reason, timing-wise, we need to?
So, the motion to approve would, tonight, would, it's not really any action that's gonna move, the only action that's gonna move us forward is to say that the commission agrees on their, on this stance, and, you know, the proposed changes, and so our next step would be to workshop with city council, and, um, I mean, we're not moving to joint public hearing and ordinance changes at this time, the next step would be a discussion.
Work in the system.
Yeah.
So you would not present the wording that we've, that Becky has come up with to improve this ordinance, you would, you'd, you'd present it and say, this is a starting point, and let's workshop it informally to see if this is still okay?
Yes.
So that you don't have the thing rejected because of a, of a, of a comma, or something that somebody says, we should add another parenthetical phrase here, or something?
Yeah, we'll present the changes that y'all came up with now to council, and basically, you know, this is P and Z's, you know, recommendation at this point, but it's not an official recommendation to change an ordinance at this time.
Okay.
So we, we have no further motion required on, on this item, is that correct?
If, if you, the, if you vote tonight, it's just gonna say that we all agree, and that would be helpful.
Okay, that is unanimous, if, if in case we are.
Timing requi, this is just a complicated topic, I'd, I'd like to, I mean, the, the-
Eric, you have a comment?
Eric? Eric? Oh, sorry, sorry, Eric, please, go ahead.
No, no, I was gonna ask the question, could we please relay that this is unanimous? And it sounds like it is, right?
Yeah, no, that's my idea, if we do a motion to approve, and the commission unanimously votes tonight, like I said, it's not an official action or official recommendation at this point, but it does show that you unanimously agree that this is, you know, where you wanna go.
I, I definitely think there's a majority, that's, that's the sense I get, but this is a complicated enough topic, unless there's a reason, if there's a timing reason, then I'm all in favor of voting, but I'm really, I'm gonna at least propose that we table this for, and I, maybe I'll have to make an actual motion, but I'm just asking first, is there, if I, we table this for two weeks, do we meet again, or, maybe it's three, I haven't looked at the schedule?
Um, so we-
Does that, does that impact anything?
No, we actually meet again, um, June, I gotta take my-
Eleventh, eleventh.
And city councils, we wouldn't be able to make anything before July sixth, city council meeting, so if we want to just leave it as a motion to discuss tonight, we can put it on the next agenda, and continue the discussion, if everybody wants to think about it.
And again, I'm just one vote, but, but I, I would, that's what I would like, I would like everybody to think about doing, since there's no timing requirement. Uh, the, the subcommittee had a lot of chance to really delve into the details, um, I'm familiar with the topic, but I really wanna, um, take more of what you've said tonight, what I've heard tonight, and really think it through, and see if there's any other issues, but that's just, that's just me, I'm, I'm-
That might allow Lisa also to weigh in, and get a, a full, full committee meeting, and since there doesn't seem to be any, uh, I won't say any urgency, but the, the, the timing wouldn't be changed by delaying to the next meeting, um, I'm okay with that.
I don't know if there's any decision's gonna be different then, but versus now, but I, I would appreciate the time to kick this around and, and think through and ask more questions, you guys have had the opportunity to really spend more, get down in the weeds. Mark, you had a-
Yeah, look, I, I support your approach, I'll follow your lead here, uh, I did, I do wanna put out on the table, though, that there was some incentive to make a quick decision here at council, our, our homework assignment was to as quick as possible address this, which we did, so, um, there is value in us answering the mail quickly-
That's fair.
-to show that we did this. Um, so, I'm, I'm just putting it out there, I'm happy to go either way, uh, I just wanna make that point, that the expectation from council had some urgency.
Absolutely, it's a good point, no, it's a good point.
I was kinda thinking the same way, um, I mean, do we even really need to workshop this with council, I mean, it's pretty clear-cut, we're setting the seventy-foot limit, and it's unanimous, this is, kick it on up, I don't mind delaying, waiting one more reading to do that, to make that official, so we as a commission think on it, but, I say at the next meeting, it's just kick it on to council, I mean, I don't see the need to workshop, it's, it is a complicated issue, but the solution, y'all, the committee came up, it's pretty clear-cut, seventy-foot limit downtown, uh, fifty elsewhere.
But it would give, go on.
I'm just checking, um, newspaper notice.
Oh, I forgot about that.
Workshop would give us a better opportunity to dialogue, you know, uh, with city council on this, and, and be able to have more of us involved in that dialogue.
Okay.
That would be the plus, of having the workshop, but there is a, a, a timing. I, I don't wanna kick the can down the road, just, just for that, but I, I just, I, I just wanna think through and make sure we've really addressed this, that there are any other, uh, ways to look at this, this matter, and, and I just want time to think about, but, it does sound like I'm the one sticking point in here of the delay, if, if, if people wanna make a decision tonight, we can, somebody ought to make a motion to vote on it tonight, and, and go.
So, I think we're still good on timing, um, the soonest we could get this advertised in the newspapers, June fifteenth, we meet on the eleventh, so if we take action, we can advertise at the, the public hearings on June fifteenth, um, if we wanna, if we choose to go ahead and just, you know, proceed with the proposal to council, um, so we have, or if, I can talk with senior staff and see, um, you know, if council wants to workshop it, um, then, you know, we can hold off on advertising.
Because don't we have some liberty to call some type of workshop or collaboration forum with them, out of cycle?
Yes.
If, if it was that pressing to council, and for the benefit of collaboration, and getting in a room and hear dissenting opinions, which is all great, um, if, if council thought it was urgent to do that, they could redirect us and say, no, let's kick this around a bit.
Yeah, so if we move forward with advertising the news, in the newspaper, and move forward with the change, it's not gonna be changed till September seventh. If we workshop it with council, that's gonna put it off at least another month, so we're looking at October before the ordinance is changed.
But then again, it's probably not a big deal.
Well, yeah, if we're sticking with the seventy-foot, then-
Yeah, nothing's really changed, yeah.
I think the Church will have clear direction.
We were, the guidance was trying to have some sort of decision for them by the end of summer.
Mm-hmm.
I think we're well on that path.
Sure.
I think part of the driver for that was, as you say, Brett, uh, if we were gonna be going to, there was discussion that we'd say seventy plus ten, there was, maybe go to ninety and drop it two feet, or leave it at seventy, if it's gonna stay at seventy, or at least if our recommendation's gonna stay at seventy, uh, it, it's probably not as much of a, a rush. And they can kinda see which way the, the tea leaves blowing.
Okay.
So, I'm okay, you, the ordinance subcommittee is already, as you say, familiar, so I'm gonna abstain from, from pushing one way or the other on this, it's really how you and Eric and Brett feel on this, if you want some-
I concur.
Some time.
I concur. You, you've made up your mind?
I'm, my mind's made up, I'm, but if you wanna think on it, I'm totally okay with that, too.
Eric, you, you already, your mind's made up?
I, I have, my, my mind's not gonna change, Joe, but if, uh, you're uncomfortable tonight moving forward, I mean, I support that as well, so.
I'm, I'm not gonna hold this up, I'm, then, then, then I would support, let's just, let's just move on. I'm not gonna be the one sticking point, just while I get comfortable, so, let's move on.
It's an important-
I agree, I agree, and, and, and I wanna make sure we get this one right.
All right, no doubt.
So we would need a, we would need a, a motion to approve. Yes. Oh, oh, okay, great, thank you for making that, cause we did all the discussion.
Yeah.
The one point, and it's a technical point, and maybe I don't need to make this, but I'm gonna discuss it now, I know we talked, back to Brett's question about structure and ornamental, and when we talk about seventy-foot, and Becky read that section, it says "structure", and then it's, and other sections of that say, hey, the definition of height is, in what, section twenty, if I remember that correctly? I, I just wanna make really sure, is, do we need to, the one thing when I read this was, do you need to add something that says "structure" or anything attached to "structure", I, or is, I just wanna make sure that we are clear here, that this is, any kind of ornamental thing that's affixed to the structure gets included in that overall height. I, I know you said combined, I know you said total height, or, and you're in the building, you guys are the experts at this, I, I would appreciate staff's comment as to, does, is the way it's written, would it, everybody read that and go, oh yeah, absolutely, that includes, whether it's a cross, or a T, or, or whatever, whatever at the top of a structure is part of the structure and included? I, I, again, that's, where your expertise.
I mean, I, I guess I personally would, the definition say the height of a building shall be measured to, so that's, that's gonna be to the roof, basically, the top of the roof.
Right.
And then, depending on what type of roof they have, it explains how you measure that, where you measure that to, so then top of the structure would be everything, building, parapet walls, antennas.
Okay.
In a previous life, I, uh, got involved in discussing the construction of radio antennas, and, um, the word that is used in, in that field is appurtenance, A-P-P-U-R-T-A-N-C-E, and it's, and it's always "structure and any appurtenance".
Things that is atta, an attachment of-
For what it's worth, I don't know if that can clarify things.
Uh, we can double-check with the building officials, see if there's something in IBC and IRC about terms for building versus structure.
Right, cause then when I read the definition of height, top of the ridge of the highest roof, uh, the top of the highest deck, the top of the highest parapet, but, I, I'm just concerned, again, back to Marcus's comment earlier, you really was in intent to clean this up, and let's put this to bed for a while, uh, and make it clear. That's, when I read through everything, I, everything made sense to me, I thought it was well-done, that was the only question I had, is if somebody reads this three years from now, uh, are they gonna understand that that structure means everything attached to that, um, spire, it also includes in this, as is in this example, a, a cross? And, and if, and if in the building world, that's perfectly clear, then I withdraw my, my question and comment.
Um, Mary Kay hasn't had a chance to review all this either, so we'll have another shot at this officially.
Okay.
When we do, because we have to notice the joint, the public hearing, and so, we can, we can put this on the next agenda, just in case, um, you know, if there's any tweaks that we need between now and then, cause Mary Kay still needs to take a look at this.
Good point.
Um, so, continue to mull it over, like I said, tonight-
Okay.
-is just direction, it's not an official, you know, action.
So that's another reason to, to wait until the next meeting to get, let Mary Kay and others take a look at the language, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that would be good.
I'm okay with that.
So formally, do we need, anybody wanna make a motion to approve tonight?
We don't need to, do we?
I, I don't, I, yeah, look, I'm just, I'm trying to, trying to make sure I'm staying correct.
We have clear direction.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, perfect, perfect, well then we won't beat the, I won't beat my, my point into the ground, you got it, understood, thank you. Okay, fair. A good point. Moving on, uh, next is our consent agenda. These items are considered routine or ministerial in nature, and will be enacted with one motion, there will be no separate discussion of items unless a commissioner so requests, in which case the item will, will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Uh, is there a motion to approve the final plat of First Baptist Church of Friendswood, number two?
Motion to approve?
Is there a second?
Uh, second.
Okay, we have a motion in the second, all in favor, shows to be unanimous. Okay, our next item is consider, consideration and possible action regarding future planning and zoning commission meeting dates, Aubrey?
There's that next meeting date I was looking for, Thursday, June eleventh, and Thursday, June twenty-fifth will be our two meetings in June.
Are there things on, well, I guess there are things on the agenda, we, we have, yeah, right, never mind.
Right, right. Okay, communications are next, commissioner updates, do any of the commissioners have anything that they wish to communicate, suggestion for future agenda items, subcommittee updates, or any general comments? I'll start, Mark, with you.
No, no comments.
Mr. Sessom?
I know, the ordinance subcommittee's done enough damage for one week.
Brett, Dick?
Uh, I promised I was gonna go to the ZBOA meeting, but had a conflict and didn't, so I don't know what happened. I promised I was gonna go to the ZBOA meeting but had a conflict and didn't, so I don't know what happened.
They approved it.
They approved both of the variances, yes.
Okay.
Eric? Great. That's, I have nothing to, tonight.
About interviews, you know?
Oh, that's, that's a great point. Good job. Good job. We are continuing to work to fill a potential vacancy in July. And so we did start our interview process for commissioners. We've interviewed three. We're looking to, to interview several more. Great candidates out there, and it's gonna be a hard, hard decision, but we are continuing forward with that and expect to be done sometime late June with that selection process. Oh, great. Good, thank you for reminding me. Okay, with that, we will move to our council liaison update. Mr. Mayor, thank you for joining us.
Yeah, well, it's a pleasure to meet with you all. I know, I get this all the time from HGAC, where Sally is the primary rep, the Houston Galveston Area Council, and I'm the backup, and when I show up, I don't know, ten or twenty mayors and county judges say, where's Sally? Why isn't Sally here? Well, Judge, can't you be happy that I'm here? And, you know, somebody's here. So I understand what you all are feeling about, where's Trish? And where's the backup Sally? Running out loud. We gotta go to tertiary or something here. But, hey, I am glad to represent city council here tonight. Before I go on and give you a couple of little tidbits, I want to thank you all for your service on planning and zoning. I mean, this, and, and I get it, you know? It's a thankless job, so I'm here to thank you. So you can't say, you know, it's completely thankless. There is at least one thank you coming from the mayor. And I don't want to do downplay any of the other committees and volunteers in this city, but planning and zoning, you guys are a critical, critical committee here. And the work that you guys do and getting to sit out here and watch the sausage being made, you know, never eat sausage again, but it's, it's impressive. And, and thank you, Aubrey, Becky, for all that you do to support these guys, because I know just, just a ton of work, staff work, and work on your parts goes into this. So thank you, thank you, thank you for serving. Rich, I guess you're the one, you're the, the old man on the.
In, in more than one way, Mayor, yes.
You are long in the tooth. I, I real, I was on city council, though, when you did get appointed, so it's.
Yes.
Maybe four years you've been serving here, so thank you for doing that, and thank you for all the others. Eric, can't quite see you. Maybe you can hear me, I don't know, but I know you're, you're getting ready to step off, and so thank you for your three-year term. And, you know, we make those terms three years because, you know, that's, that's about the right length of time. We're, we're happy when people want to get reappointed, but you've, you've done your service for Friendswood when you serve on this committee for three years. I, I can guarantee that. So thank you all for that. Now I'll get off of that soapbox. I said, Trish, what do you usually tell these people? I mean, in your couple of minutes, and she said, well, I would just tell them a little bit about what's going on, what decisions are being made. And so I'll touch on a couple of things. Fourth of July, fourth of July, we have a semblance of a plan. It involves reverse parades. Who knows what a reverse parade is? Now, this is a brand-new term, right, Aubrey? A reverse parade, you don't go to the parade, the parade comes to you. So you sit out on the front porch of your house and at the appointed time, and you wait for a parade to go by. So we're gonna do that as efficiently as we can. We're gonna have seven reverse parades simultaneously. So bad news is, not everybody gets to see the mayor, but I tell you, there's a lot of people in town that'd be happy about that. But good news is, I think we, we're gonna be able to do it. We're gonna be able to have a parade. We're gonna celebrate the fourth of July for the one hundred and twenty-fifth time here in Friendswood consecutively. Some people say, hey, there's been a parade in Friendswood for one hundred and twenty-five years. That's not correct. We have celebrated fourth of July for one hundred and twenty-five years in Friendswood. They haven't had a parade every year. There have been, way in the beginning, they didn't have, there was no such thing as parades, I don't think, back then, but maybe. Anyway, reverse parade, no concert, pretty sure no fireworks. Senior staff kind of agree on that. Aubrey, I'm, that's the latest I heard, is no fireworks. Couple of downsides to, you know, we could break up the fireworks shows. We could have three different locations for fireworks. Unfortunately, every city around us, except for Webster, has canceled their fireworks. So you won't believe the mob scene in Friendswood on the fourth of July evening if we have fireworks. And even if we break it up into three different locations where people can stay in their cars, you know, most of the church parking lots would get used for, for these things. And fourth of July is a Saturday, so we'd have to clean up all these parking lots for church on Sunday, or else, you know, the city'd get a black eye from all the churches. So anyway, number of reasons, concert, obviously, because we don't want that group of people to gather on the fourth of July. But, so I think, I think that's what I wanted to say about fourth of July. Now, concerts in the park, you know, flip side of no concert on the fourth of July, but in June, we are gonna have concerts in the park, just not Stevenson Park. We're gonna have drive-in concerts at Centennial Park, park in the parking lot facing the stage, wherever the stage ends up. I'm not sure if that's determined yet, but I have a stage, sound system. I think James Tony is actually trying to get a, an FM transmitter, you know, for the city, so that you could actually tune in to the concert on your car radio and even make the sound better, maybe. We don't have an FM, we have an AM transmitter right now, but, so I don't know if we'll be able to make that happen. Jeff Newfer would have to cut loose with some peg channel money for that, probably. So.
That's interesting.
Anyway, starting June fifth, Friday, June fifth, we'll have our first concert in the park. We'll have five of those. Movies in the park are going ahead. I don't have the plan on movies in the park. Those come later in the summer. But anyway, I, I think that's all I was gonna say. Probably have talked.
No, thank you for the update. No, that's, that's all, a lot of that's new to me, so thank you very much.
Sure. Any questions I can answer?
No. Thank you for coming tonight.
My pleasure. Thank you, guys, for.
Okay, next, our staff updates. Aubrey, anything?
Just those two variances were approved by the zoning board of adjustment. It was a front yard and side yard setback for one property to allow them to rebuild post Harvey. They do have some grant money from the state that they're, from the general land office, so it's good to let them move forward with that project. I think that's about all I have.
Becky?
We will have a variance again the end of June. We'll have another meeting. I'll send that stuff out next week. But there's a homeowner that lost their home due to fire, and so now they have to come into compliance. And some of our older subdivisions aren't built the same way our current codes are, so we'll take a look at that.
Okay, thank you. Mary Kay, anything?
No, thank you.
Okay. Well, with that, the May twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty Planning and Zoning Regular Meeting is now adjourned. Thanks, everybody. Thank you.